This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Good evening and welcome to the Brighton Central School District Board of Education Public Meeting, Education Meeting for Tuesday, October 12th. To begin with, we'll call for public participation. Is there anyone here present that would like to speak? Malaney?
Yes.
That's okay. Go right ahead.
All right, I'm back. Just say no, I hate public speaking. This is really hard for me. I might just throw up, but I have to keep coming. I have to just keep offering another point of view. And Dr. McGowan, you said something at the end of the last board meeting, so I wanted to make sure I came, just to offer another perspective again. You were really proud of the vaccination rate between among the staff and the student population in the school, and I just want to offer another perspective. I just want you to be considerate of parents or children that might have allergies and can't do these vaccines. There might be people with very strong religious convictions that can't, that will not take these vaccines. There is some people that actually view it as a racist program, and for that, I would say, research the Tuskegee experiments that started in the 1930s. And you'll start to understand why there's some resistance with certain populations. The other thing, you, some people, I mean, I think the elephant in the room is if you have natural immunity, right? So I think, I don't know if any of you are starting to feel this yet, though, or you have friends that feel it, that you're kind of stuck nowhere, right? And all these places are mandating the vaccine, but you can't do it for whatever reason. And I don't know if you've been following the news, well, it's hard to find it, but thousands of healthcare workers recently left the industry. They were quit or fired because they wouldn't get the vaccine. And just Monday, air traffic controllers walked off the job. They'll tell you it was the weather, but if you know any people in the airline industry, it was the air traffic controllers, and the pilots are going to do it next with the flight attendants. So there's a reason, I would ask yourselves, why are these people so adamant against it? They're willing to leave their jobs, their careers that they might have had for 20 years. New York City, teachers did the exact same thing. They left their jobs. So as I know, the American Rescue Plan Act encourages that messaging of vaccination. I just want you to keep in mind, there are some people that have very other concerns of why they won't do this. And I'm not saying it's a, I'm not for or against the vaccine. I'm for medical choice. That is why I wear this shirt. I stand up for liberty and choice. I really think it's all about choice. And the other comment that you had is, I didn't trust the CDC or the FDA or the WHO. But you should ask, why doesn't she do that? Why doesn't she just blindly trust them? And I had sent you guys some emails since March of 2020, and because something didn't sit right in my gut, and I'm not the only one. And since then, I've spent over 2,000 hours researching different things, and I'm starting to see a lot of really odd things going on. So I don't just say that lightly. Eventually, I will show you the connections. But there is connections between Fauci, CDC, the FDA, Big Pharma, and where the money is going. If you know what, if you talk to people in the hospital system, if you talk to the first responders, you'll start to understand what is truly going on. And I just, I care about the community. I really want people to research and spend more time questioning, or perhaps, you're unfortunate and you have a reaction to the first shot, and you can't get the second shot. Where does that put you? Or maybe it's not now, it's a booster that you can't take. But what happened in Israel recently is you get two vaccines, but now, if you don't have the booster, you lose your vaccine card, your papers, to get in anywhere. You are now no longer able to participate in society because you won't get the booster. So I just want you to be aware of that. You might think, oh, it'll stop. We'll go back to normal. We'll, we'll wear the mask. We'll get the vaccines. We'll do what they say. But it's not going to stop, and I just want you to be aware of that. And if somebody has a reaction that you know of, or you start to see some of the side effects, keep that in mind, you know? So the only thing I was going to end with is, when the government threatens to take away any, an individual's rights to employment, healthcare, education, and the ability to enter a store, to buy food, enter a hospital, travel in public, there is no other word for it but tyranny. Where's the choice? Where's the freedom? And that was, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Malaney, very much.
Malaney, I just want to point out, I only said that you don't trust the CDC, FDA, and WHO because I was repeating to you what you had said in your comment. I didn't make a judgment about you not trusting them. I was repeating back that you, you yourself said you don't trust them. I will tell you that our infection rate is, in school, is the second lowest in the area, and our vaccination rate is the second highest. It's a very clear line drawn between those two things. And in countries where people are vaccinated at a higher level, less people are dying. And where they're wearing masks, less people are dying. So those are the facts as we know them and what we have spoken to. We're not required to promote the vaccine through rescue funding. We have simply done that because we think it's the right thing to do. And I would quote even Governor Abbott in the state of Texas, who also yesterday signed a bill regarding choice in terms of vaccines, said at the end of his session that it was the safest and most reliable way for us to reduce deaths using the vaccine and encouraged people, although he didn't think it should be a choice. So I don't, I can understand the perspective on mandates. We're not mandating the vaccine. That's not part of our mandate or our direction. And respect to your perspective may be different on that, but that's not something that we're talking about. And I agree with you, there are people that can't get the vaccine, and I do understand that. I wasn't speaking to that at all, just that we had a high level of vaccination. So, thank you.
I'll also just add, on behalf of the board, we appreciate hearing everyone's views. We represent everyone in this community, and you're actually a very good public speaker. So appreciate you coming up and speaking honestly and respectfully with your views. We have to hear all the views, so thank you for that. Is there anybody else for public participation? Okay. Next up is the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Karen, seconded by Susan. Any questions with regards to what we're covering tonight, or anything on the agenda? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is approved. Next up is the approval of the minutes from the September 28th, 2021 meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Julene? Seconded by Esther. Any questions from the minutes? We've obviously had them for a little bit. They're on the site. Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Approved. Next up, we have the very real pleasure to introduce Dr. Michaelina to give us a visual and performing arts update.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight and celebrate the work of our amazing team. So again, thank you for this opportunity, and I'm pleased to be able to share some highlights from the work from last year, talk a little bit about the response to the COVID challenge, and the way that our students and faculty have responded to that and still support the work that we do in the visual performing arts, and then also take a glimpse into the future and our upcoming work with students. Traditionally, on this night, we would start with some, some live performances by students. And it's always a cherished part, I think, for all of us. Under the current conditions, we're unable to do that tonight, but I'm really looking forward to our December meeting at the high school, where we'll be able to share some, some live student work in our absolutely beautiful and gorgeous BHS auditorium. So we're very, very excited. However, I did want to share-
Mike, I just referenced, just for the notes, it's December 14th. We will be meeting at the high school. It's like we met at Council Rock at our last meeting. So I appreciate you bringing it up. That's December 14th.
December 14th, yes. So, but I didn't, I didn't want the day to go by without a little celebration from kids and a little guidance from, from the children as well. So we have a quick video. It's about two and a half minutes. And this is our Brighton High School mixed choir. A little bit of context and background. This is after two rehearsals with this song. I challenged Sarah Stabel to help out with this a little bit. And, and so the students were arranged in our auditorium at the high school, and they just have a little bit of, kind of a mindset shift for us to really think about hope for the future in the words of this song. So I thought we would start with that.
Here in deep within us are treasures to be found. And to two asks questions, simply and profound. Why we're here and who we'll be and where the road may be. And everything there is to look to prosper and succeed. For hope will light our way. As journeys begin with each new day. We will set our course on shining star. Speed along to ports afar, be the best of who we are. And hope will light our way. We will make a difference. We will be the change. We will mount the highest peak that ever climbed in man. And we will discover those secrets in our hearts. We'll lift a dreamless stance to open the strength to reach our goals. Our hope will light our way. As journeys begin with each new day. We will set our course on shining star. Speed along to ports afar, be the best of who we are. And hope will light our way. Our hope will light our way. As journeys begin with each new day. We will set our course on a shining star. Speed along to ports afar, be the best of who we are. And hope will light, hope will light, hope will light our way. Hope will light our way.
So I want to thank Sarah for directing that group, and Ben Mikes, our accompanist, for all the work that he does to support the students in their learning, to be able, after a couple of rehearsals, to be able to put on a performance like that. So another round of applause for Sarah and the team. And whenever I need to have my faith restored, I look out to the kids. And I find myself in the chorus room, in the band room, you know, somewhere where kids are creating, where children are showing their passions. And I really like this piece, Sarah, that you selected because it starts, "We will set our course on a shining star. Speed along to ports afar, be the best of who we are. And hope will light our way." And to me, the kids represent that. So to be able to be here tonight, to share what they're doing, is just an absolute pleasure for me. And really, tonight is a celebration of the habits of mind, persisting, thinking flexibly, creating, imagining, innovating, taking responsible risks, and learning continuously. In the past 18 months, we've been challenged as a society and as a school to find ways to make it work for children and to stay engaged with each other as human beings. And I'm extremely proud of the work that our young artists, led by a dedicated team of educators, has accomplished. I thank you for the opportunity to share some of those highlights tonight. And again, we're looking forward to December, where we can share some more live work in, in our brand-new space. So hybrid learning cohorts and 12-foot social distancing for singers and instrumentalists definitely handed us some challenges this year that we had to overcome. The creative team really responded with a variety of methods to engage students and audiences and keep our learning moving forward. Using video conferencing to bring guest speakers into the classroom and to, most importantly, stay in touch with our students when they were home on their own. They needed us and they needed each other, and we were able to do that using technology in some small part. To use that same technology to engage students in small lesson groups, hold cohort rehearsals in our largest available spaces, hosting outdoor concerts during the warmer months, and in the colder months, bringing ensembles together using online platforms that we pioneered with some folks at the University of Michigan and working with Dr. Rachel Lauber to put into our classrooms upbeat music, to be able to share music and music-making together. And that's what that little picture is with all the tiny little Brady Bunch shots. Those, that's an entire ensemble of students performing music together, but by themselves in their own homes. These are all examples of the shifts that we made last year to engage our young artists and move them forward towards our learning goals that we hold for them. So what did that look like for us this last year? Well, at first, like any challenge, you're kind of struck with a moment where you take a deep breath and try to orient yourself. That lasted about a minute, and then this creative team that I have the pleasure of working with got down to work to find the opportunities in that space. And so I really wanted to highlight some of the things that we were able to accomplish. The online world of Zoom, which was really sort of a mystery to all of us when this all started, became a critical tool for us to stay in contact with our students. And we found very quickly that we needed the students, and the students needed us, and we needed that connection, that we were able to do, at least in some part, through the online work that we did. At the high school, we did not have an opportunity to have large ensembles, even in the cohort model, because we, we also had, the, the high school auditorium was under construction. We didn't have any big spaces at the high school. The shift that was made there was to make music theory available to every student that was engaged in an ensemble, that wanted to be involved in that. And we had over 100 students take a course that they never would have taken necessarily to look at music and music-making in a different way. Just really thrilled that they were able to get that opportunity in lieu of some more normal things that we would have done. Our teams got together and put together a digital district strings concert. We didn't want to lose the 30-plus-year tradition of the digital, of the district strings concert, so a digital version of that was put into place. Our technical production supervisor, Christopher Schneider, who is not a teacher by training, but is definitely a teacher, looked at his technical production students and said, "I can't go a year without you being engaged." He put together an asynchronous and synchronous experience using Schoology, where he not only delivered the curriculum of technical production in terms of the knowledge base, but also engaged students in real professional development through some of the, the professional organizations that he belongs to and their online coursework. Just an amazing pivot for our, for our crew, and those students really benefited from that. We came back this year. We have more tech production crew students than I think we've ever had. Our visual art teams worked on Six Feet Apart virtual art shows, where they brought the show to the audience, rather than bringing the audience into the show. And six of our students submitted work and were accepted to a show at the University of Rochester Medical Center, Bridges Gallery, called Youth for Racial Justice: Not a Moment, But a Movement. And it was amazing to hear those students responding to and receiving feedback from professional artists and art professors from the University of Rochester, who was really quite, quite an evening, all done virtually. Our ensembles that were able to rehearse held virtual concerts from a distance and culminating in the Spring Outdoor Concert Series, which was just absolutely wonderful to be outside, enjoying live music, whether it was under one of Tom's tents behind the high school or over on the, on the green next to the TCMS wing, where kids were presenting what they had learned. And our Hindsight 2020 project, I would be remiss if I didn't mention the theater students here as well. Our Hindsight 2020 project was, in the spirit of 24-hour plays, students create it from scratch. It doesn't exist at the beginning of this movement. And we knew we couldn't do it in 24 hours because we couldn't bring everyone together. So we did it over about eight weeks. Students engaged in the process of storyboarding and conceptualizing their ideas. Then writers wrote the, the scenes for the plays, handed them off to director teams, who then cast from our, from our group of actors. The entire thing was focused on being a teenager in the middle of the world that we were living in right now. It surfaced the stressors, and most importantly, allowed us as adults to address some of those stressors with the students, to keep them in a safe place where they knew they could process and move forward with their learning. So it was a wonderful, wonderful experience for kids. Hats off to Colleen Parent for leading that endeavor for our theater students. We didn't have as many opportunities to get out into the community this past year, but we did have students take advantage of opportunities when they presented themselves. We had some of our string students involved in an outreach program called Harmonies for Healing Project, where they created relaxing soundtracks that were then posted to YouTube and then shared those with, with local frontline workers, so that when they did, when frontline workers did have an opportunity to take a break, they could have a musical interlude to go along with that. And that was Andrew Guo, Annie Guo, and some other students working with Dr. Lauber. Again, I talked a little bit before about using technology to connect. We had a 24-hour orchestra content drop that used technology to bring a lot of different modes of learning around the orchestral work that we're doing at the high school together. Anything from visual art production, talking about what music meant to students. There was a nice little competitive piece on how to create your very own cheese tray in preparation for a virtual, watching a virtual concert at home. That was very, very popular, and I think we'll get some, some mileage out of that. And then we also had the opportunity, got a call from the town around participating in the Memorial Day celebration. And Sarah selected some students that really needed an audience at that moment, were part engaged in that process and participated in the Memorial Day celebration at Buckland Park. And then our Memorial Art Gallery outdoor pop-up concert, which was also on YouTube. It was one of those things where the idea came up. It was a beautiful day. Students arrived at the Memorial Art Gallery and put on a concert right outdoors on the front steps. And it was a wonderful, wonderful opportunity for those who got to see it, many who were not even anticipating an orchestral concert on their walk down the street. We are super proud of the work that the students have done in the midst of all of these changes that have happened around them. I mentioned the art students from TCMS with the Bridges Virtual Art Exhibition. Every year, we, we submit an application to the NAMM community. And again, last year, we were awarded the Best Community for Music Education. This is our 12th year for that. And our NISBDA, which is the New York State Band Directors Association, we had two students qualify and were named honor band members this year, which is a huge honor for them. Marlena Berger and Tamsin Spiller did a wonderful job. And that was a virtual event, again, this, for the first time this year, but a wonderful honor for them to be selected. This year, we have 11 students that were selected for the RPYO. We have two students selected for Conference Allstate, and will be representing the high school this November at the Allstate Conference. And we have several other students that are right on the edge that were selected as alternates. And I anticipate that a couple of those students will be tapped to be part of that as well. And I mentioned Andrew Guo a little bit earlier. He was selected. What an amazing honor for him. The All Eastern Orchestra, well-deserved honor. He was the principal second violin player for that All Eastern Orchestra. Quite an honor for the school and an amazing opportunity for him as he wrapped up his, his career here at Brighton. We're looking forward to, obviously, our brand-new auditorium and presenting some work there. In December, when, when you're there, you'll also have an opportunity to see student artwork exhibited in the lobby as well. It's a wonderful facility, so it gives us a chance to show off what the students have been working on. We're excited to be adding live streaming to help us with crowd sizes in the auditorium. So we're going to be live streaming all of our VPA events this year. It's, it's a little bit nerve-wracking, but we're going to do a great job. It's going to be, it's going to be a wonderful addition to our repertoire for performances. We have professionals sharing their work and their learning at the, at the state conference. Jenny Mull, I wanted to point out, is going to be presenting on an interdisciplinary project that she's been working with over the last three or four years at the middle school and connecting music to other content areas. We have a full calendar of theater, concerts, and art shows that we're really, really excited to be presenting for the community. And our professional development, led by Dave Myers, Sarah Stabel, who is here tonight, and Sarah Jayz, who really focusing on the district's diversity, equity, inclusion initiatives, as well as some work around our digital media in the fine heart. So we're really excited to be continuing that work moving forward, along with the other things that, that we've been working with. And I would be remiss if I didn't take a moment and say thank you to the Board of Education for all the work that you do behind the scenes to support this work. And actually, I have kind of a special little thank you for the board, if we've got a few minutes. The students wanted to say hi, and they wanted to say thank you. So I'm going to turn it over to them. It's going to be a video thank you, but a heartfelt thank you nonetheless.
We are Mrs. Bamber, it's class, and we love music.
Thank you! Thank you. We love music.
Hello. This is Mrs. Allback class. Welcome to music.
We love music.
Thank you for supporting our fans.
Thank you for all you do.
I love learning.
I love show trumpets.
Thank you, Bordova.
Why is it important to you to have this musical opportunity in your school?
It's important to me to have this opportunity because I get to connect with my friends in an after-school activity, and I get to meet new people and have fun acting and performing.
What is it about the performing arts that's important to you?
Well, I can see all my friends after school. I've met a lot more people here who are very close to me, and I just get to do what I love every day after school.
What is it about the performing arts that's important to you?
Well, I think it's important to get a feel for the business and just see what you're going into. So when you grow up, you know, you want to be an actor. You know exactly what's going to happen in a sense. And also, I get to meet a lot of people I didn't really get to meet, and I have fun, yeah.
Are you excited to have a musical to perform in?
Uh, yeah. And I think it's important because we get to hang out with other people and interact with a lot more people. Because of the pandemic, you don't get to hang out with many people, so you get to interact with a lot more people.
What is it about musical?
my best friends and sing with them. Performing arts have been pretty much my life, and I'm so thankful for all the opportunities I've had, and I'm so thankful for the school board, so thank you so much.
One of my favorite parts about being in Brighton is the performing arts program. It's been a really good outlet for me, and it's like my main source of happiness, and I'm just really grateful that I am a part of it.
Hi there, my name's Luca Olivano, I'm a senior here at Brighton, and I've been doing band since, you know, fifth grade, like right from the get-go. I think that having music in my life, like I play piano outside of school, and having it in school and bonding with my friends and all of these people who share the same love for music is an amazing experience, and yeah, I just want to say thank you for that, so.
The BHS music program has just been wonderful for me. I started in middle school, and it's just been so instrumental in helping me learn my instrument and progress with both percussion and piano, and I've also got to learn a little bit more about other instruments and the staff that we have, Ms. Schmidt and Dr. Fisher and Mr. Schuzick are just amazing in helping everyone, you know, achieve what they're capable of. The concerts are really fun, you make a ton of friends who are like-minded, and so I just want to say thank you, Board of Education, for continuing to support the music program at Brighton High School, because it really, it is just so, like, it's so amazing to be able to pursue something so fun and so meaningful in school, so we really appreciate it, me and all my friends, so thank you.
Music at BHS is very important because it helps us form a community, and within that community, we get to play awesome music that is very stress-relieving and helps us function throughout the rest of the day.
Brighton Theater Department has allowed me to explore myself as a student and an artist.
It allows me to express my creativity while supporting the school and giving others a performance.
Since the beginning of participating shows at Brighton Theater for me, it's been such a great creative outlet and outlet of happiness.
I'm so grateful to pursue these creative endeavors surrounded by amazing people. I'm incredibly thankful for the opportunities that have been presented to me and the amazing people I've known and worked with.
I'm so thankful to be part of such a great program with such great training, and I'm so thankful to be part of such an embracing community, in particular, the Brighton School Board.
Thank you!
Thank you, Board of Education!
Thank you from Nada!
Bruna!
Daisy Davis!
Thank you!
Thank you, Board of Education!
Thank you from Nada!
Bruna!
Daisy Davis!
Thank you!
Stop, wait a minute!
Thank you, Board of Education!
Thank you!
I think that's the mic drop, right? Thank you very much, couldn't have said it better than the kids.
I feel like just about any way I follow that, it diminishes that. I mean, that's just amazing. First, though, I would like to say thank you, Mike, to you, your leadership with the department, your work to support all of those artists and the instructors who work with them, has been outstanding. So thank you and for all the effort you put into still making this such a special event and presentation despite the distance and the logistical issues, and everything you did to help support that work continuing throughout the pandemic. Just want to say thanks to you for a second.
You're very welcome, it was a pleasure, Kevin.
I'll add one thing, because Julian always reminds us, we're not really meeting until the art's behind us, and so thank you for all of the art you're going to produce this year from all four of the schools. We love looking at it when we come in, it's a great backdrop, and it's a great representation of all our kids, so sometimes it seems like a small detail, but we come in looking for what that art's going to be, so thank you for everyone, to everyone, for doing all of this, all the time, for all of our board meetings.
I'll pass that along. Sarah Stabel is here, can we give Sarah a round of applause? Great job, Sarah, with your kids, as always, and just what great performances. I'm assuming it's Eric Brunner that captured it all on video, too, and thumbs up to him as well, we'll certainly recognize him, but, you know, everybody taking time out of their schedule to help create that, and it's just such a beautiful representation of the work that is done. It's really a segue, too, and the reason why we save the Visual Performing Arts presentation for this particular evening is this, it is, for us, our Board of Education recognition evening, so to start, thank you. But here's the deal, first grade is probably going to happen, whether or not you provide great leadership. English 11 is probably going to happen, whether or not you provide great leadership. That is not always going to happen without your support, your leadership, and the work that you do as Board of Education members, and what I mean is, those are the things that distinguish us. I'd make the argument also that a great first-grade experience is because of your leadership, a great junior English experience is also because of your leadership and your help, and the reason why our kids are graduating at the rate they are is because of your support, your guidance, and your leadership. You do it as volunteers, you volunteer among the 690 school boards across the state, over 5,000 school board members who spend, on average, over six hours a week, and you spend far more than that on this Board of Education. It's a major league sport, it's full contact, and you perform your duties at such a high level, participating on committees, reading materials, participating in decision-making, and giving us the guidance and support we need to help make those things happen. So yes, it happens because of incredible educators, very supportive parents and kids, but school boards, the School Board Association has this slogan, "That you lead so students can achieve," and that's absolutely true, and we emphasize that all the time, but those are the things that, especially in the leanest years that we've had in the past decade or so, you've made sure that those things could still happen, and it would have been easy to walk away from that and to not lead with courage and say, "We need to keep these things." So when you look at those, especially the high school-age kids that just performed, they have experienced a series of reevaluation and reductions and thoughts about those programs, but they didn't experience devastating cuts to program, again, because you led our community away that said, "No, these things are still important to us, we still should prioritize these things, and we need to figure out a way to still make them happen." So it's a great, living, breathing example of your service, your work here, particularly in our district and school boards across the state. So Board Recognition Week is officially, New York State starts next week, the governor offers a proclamation, but we simply wanted to stop and say thank you to you tonight and give you a round of applause, so thank you so much. Before you open up a special presentation, I'd like to ask Jamie Porter, President of Brighton Teachers Association, to step up to the podium as well, who asked to be here on behalf of our teaching staff tonight.
Hello, everyone, so I'm Jamie Porter, the President of the Brighton Teachers Association. Judy Wegman retired last year, and I'm honored to take her place. If I'm not doing BTA stuff, you can find me at the high school teaching chemistry. I wanted to thank the Board of Education for your leadership through difficult times, your unwavering commitment to our students and our community, and your support to continually improve the Brighton schools, to make them one of the best places to go to school in the country. We are fortunate to have such a dedicated group of people leading our school district. Thank you all for your service, your dedication, and your hard work on behalf of the community. The Brighton Teachers Association appreciates all the time you spend serving on the board. The BTA is fortunate to have a positive and collaborative relationship with the Board of Education. Working together toward common goals has created the supportive, rigorous, and exceptional educational system we have here in Brighton. I look forward to the opportunity to work together to best serve our students and families. We have challenges ahead, but with trust, partnership, and common purpose, we can continue to work towards the excellence in education that our students and community deserves. Without a doubt, the Brighton Central School District is better because of your work. In gratitude for your service, the BTA has donated to the Brighton Education Fund in the Board of Education's name. As the BTA President, a Brighton resident, and the father of two students in the district, thank you again for all of your efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So it's interesting, when you think about your service historically, following in the footsteps of those that came before you, from the people in our country who first formed the schools in their small locations, their towns, their villages, their colonies, and said, "We would like this group of people to help make decisions on behalf of our schools, to figure out what our kids should learn to teach, or should learn, who should teach it, who the traveling teacher would be," and evolving over time to some pretty deep micromanagement of schools, right, and the, "How much coal should we get?" and "How much ink for the blotters?" et cetera, to the policy role that you serve in today. But I also think you're one of the last vestiges of democracy and true representative democracy. I'd probably yield the Florida Peter Wegman, a great social studies teacher at McQuade, one of our parents, although he would give a far deeper lecture and show my inadequacy in explaining this, but I will say this, you are volunteers who choose to represent many different interests in our community, and I look around the table and think about the incredible difference in your backgrounds, your neighborhoods, your jobs, your experiences, your educational backgrounds, and how awesome that is that you bring to the table to every decision, these varied perspectives, and how important that is and the time that you put into that. So thank you for that, thank you for giving us the guidance and support we need, but more than anything, you bring one more thing for our kids, for our families, and for this district, and it's spelled out in the gift that we present to you tonight, so if you could open that up and take a look at it, it's what you give, more than anything, to our kids and to our families, and it's much appreciated.
That's beautiful, I love it. A second grader.
It's from a second grader, Julian, would you mind reading the name on the back?
I hope I say it correctly, Stewie Fruit, am I saying it correctly?
Yes, Stewie Fruit, second grader, a beautiful piece of artwork and a unique gift, but again, it's what you give to all of our kids, and we appreciate that, so.
With that, once again, on behalf of the leadership team, our students, our parents,
and our school community, we say thank you for your service and for all that you do for all of us, much appreciated.
On behalf of the board, thank you, to the teachers, the principals, Kevin, you and your leadership team, obviously Jamie and the BTA, all of us here do come from different backgrounds, but we love doing the work, we love trying to create the greatest possible experience for the kids, and it's sometimes taxing, and it's sometimes not easy, but it's important, and we're all, I'll speak for everyone, we're all happy to be part of this as a way to help continue to make Brighton just a great place to get an education, so our appreciation to everyone for the kind words tonight, obviously, very nice.
Thank you.
How do I need my glasses again? Next up is the approval of the second reading. The first reading was done back on September 28th for the minutes, and it's four separate policies. We can approve them at once, but I'm going to read each of them. This is the second reading of the following policies. Once acted on, these will become official policy. First, Policy 6411 Personnel, Use of Email in the District. Policy 5520, Non-Instructional Business Operations, Extra Classroom Activity Funds. Policy 7551, Students, Sexual Harassment of Students, and possibly, uh, Policy, excuse me, 5681, Non-Instructional Business Operations, School Safety Plans. As noted, we did read these, have these for first read at the September 28th meeting. Are there any questions on these policies?
Is fourth one? Do you refer on the agenda? I don't know which one.
No, I think I read date.
Did you get all four?
Yeah, I think I got all four, because I was working on.
Oh, you're reading from there?
Yes, yes, thank you.
I was thinking of the other one.
No, that's okay. So for those four policies, 6411, 5520, 7551, and 5681, are there any questions? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Karen?
Seconded.
Seconded by Christina. Any additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Those are not policy. From the consent agenda, I'll make note of a couple of things. Approval of fundraising activities, Brighton Basketball Boys and Girls Boosters, an online apparel sale, and then Junior Class Student Council, a bracelet sale in honor of Josh Ulowa, which will take place on the BHS turf field. And finally, gifts, we do read the gifts. A gift from the Brighton Education Fund to Fres, French Road Elementary School, in the amount of $2,500, to support the Behavioral Support Specialist School Counselor Ashley Ellis and Special Ed Teacher Matthew Ohm, to purchase furnishings and support materials for a quiet room for use by students in the PATH program and by other students who have social, emotional issues who would benefit from a quiet space. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Seconded.
Moved by Julian, seconded by Susan. Any questions on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I will make note that our next meeting in October 26th will be at French Road Elementary School. We will be touring all the schools this year based on the, just about their completion of the Capitol Project, so we'll be able to learn also about what was accomplished over the last few years at French Road to improve that facility. As Dr. Leener noted, we're going to be at BHS on December 14th, and we will be at TCMS on January 4th, so if you will, taking the show on the road a little bit. Any other comments or questions before we adjourn? Board?
It was just a beautiful presentation by Dr. Leener, so thanks again, it's a really bright spot of the day, it's really wonderful, I'm very proud to be a part of the board, so thanks for representing us.
Absolutely, greatly appreciated. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Julian, seconded by Karen?
Esther.
Seconded by Esther?
Sure.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned, thank you very much.
This has been a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.